Good evening. Today is Tuesday, March 4th. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which stands one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Heather, would you please take role?
Councilmember Raditz.
Here.
Mayor Protem Smith.
Here.
Councilmember Lasky.
Here.
Mayor Sullivan.
Here.
Councilmember Grabowski.
Here.
Councilmember Ruska.
Here.
City manager.
Here.
DPW director.
Here.
Finance director.
Here.
Community development director.
Here.
Fire chief.
Here.
City engineer.
Here.
Role call complete.
Thank you. Public hearings we have none. Citizens' comment on agenda-related items. Any citizen with correspondence to be distributed to council should provide items to the city clerk prior to start of the meeting or after the meeting has adjourned, limited to five minutes. Buddy? Consent agenda, all items.
Oh, we have one.
Sorry. Oh, I'm sorry. Go ahead.
Sorry, I'll be late. Less than five minutes. Kevin Postma, and I'm just here to thank you for two things. Number one, I already thank Jeff for plowing out Manmade. It's been fun to go play there in the wintertime this year. And the second thing, I'm here to thank you for your support of the 2025 Great Lakes Environmental Film Festival that's coming up on March 22nd. It's going to be at Manistee High School. We've got a list of a lot of great speakers. It was a big success last year, so thank you for your support then, and thank you for supporting us again this year.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, council. I wish the city attorney had been here tonight. I would like him to think about this before you voted in. Regarding the proposed new ordinance 2501, by whose subjective opinion would a person be arrested for acting to annoy? It would seem to me that it would be impossible to get a conviction on that basis unless that person admitted that their intention was to annoy. Some cop could not determine a person's intention. Possibly inject wording to the effect of, "After several/numerous attempts..." dot-dot-dot, "They continue to annoy..." dot-dot-dot. Make it a three strikes and you're out. At that point, it could reasonably be construed as intentional and not a subjective opinion of someone's intention. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else on the consent agenda? All items marked with an asterisk are considered by the city manager to be routine matters. Prior to approval, any member of council may have an item removed and taken up during the regular portion of the meeting. Items include approval of minutes, cash balances, revenue and expenses, balance sheet, consideration of ordinance 25-01 to amend Chapter 662 piece disturbances of the City of Manistee, Michigan codified ordinances, consideration of the 2025 Walk a Mile in Her Shoes awareness event, consideration of a resolution of support for the Great Lakes Environmental Festival. At this time, council could take action to approve the consent agenda as presented. Is there a motion?
I'll make a motion.
I will second that motion.
Motion by Jim, seconded by Mr. Smith. Any discussion?
Yes, I just have one thing. Regarding the walk a mile, will there be any, Jeff, will there be any interference with that North River Walk construction, with that Walker Mile event, do you think?
I'm not familiar with the event, so I'm not sure.
Looks like.
I want to check it out.
April 26, 2025. So I can, we just had a question about the Memorial Day Parade as well, so I did send that to Shane, who's working on the spec, so we can make note of those events and make sure it doesn't interfere.
All right.
With those dates, you will not interfere with the charge.
Okay. Thanks.
Heather, would you please take role?
Councilmember Raditz.
Yes.
Mayor Protem Smith.
Yes.
Councilmember Lasky.
Yes.
Mayor Sullivan.
Yes.
Councilmember Grabowski.
Yes.
Councilmember Ruska.
Yes.
Motion approved.
Thank you. Consideration of ordinance 25-01 to amend Chapter 662 piece.
No, we've, the ordinance, we already done on consent.
Where are we? Oh, I'm sorry. Consideration of awarding a contract to perform annual generator maintenance. The city owns and operates 18 generators which are utilized on critical facilities for backup power. A quote from, was requested from Cummins Sales and Services to provide annual maintenance inspections and testing of these units. The quote is based on a Sourcewell purchasing contract similar to MI deal. At this time, council could take action to approve a five-year contract with Cummins Sales and Services. Is there a motion?
I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
Any discussion?
Were these inspected before? Have we always had an annual inspection?
We previously had bid this out and had it under contract and then renewed that contract. The firm that used to do that work was sold, and that company no longer offers the services. So we looked for a new vendor.
It was a price competitive, comparative?
Pretty competitive. We actually didn't get the best service from the last vendor. And if you looked over the list, the majority of our larger, more important generators are built by Cummins. So we've had to call on them time to time, and they have been excellent and very responsive. So I think in the long term, this is a very good deal for us.
Looked like a lot of work under the scope of services. Yes. How does your department know the work is being done? I mean, it's just...
I can answer it a little bit differently.
Okay.
When it's not being done, they don't start.
Okay.
We've had that a number of times. So that's why we've gone to an expertise firm for this, so that through, they know what they're looking for, they know what to do.
But you test your generators, like, once a month?
The generators run every Monday.
Okay.
They start up a test cycle.
Okay.
If you looked into that contract, though, there's kind of sprinkled in what's called load bank testing. So load bank testing, a generator is just, when it tests on a weekly basis, it starts up, it runs for a while, and it shuts back off. What a load bank test does is they bring in a, literally a resistor bank, like plugging in a giant toaster, and they make that generator produce electricity under power. So it tests it under full load, and it ensures that if anything's going to break or anything is getting weak, they can diagnose that and we can get it fixed ahead of time.
This is just a question. When the alarms go off, who answers that and who's the backups?
So our mechanic and our assistant mechanic are the first in line. Top line's usually the next call.
Okay.
And then Cummins would be within minutes of that also.
All right, thanks.
And a lot of times, they just help us over the phone to reset something or, you know, they can diagnose it over the phone.
Yeah.
But it has happened to us, so.
Thanks. Thanks, Jeff. Heather, would you please take role?
Councilmember Raditz.
Yes.
Mayor Protem Smith.
Yes.
Councilmember Lasky.
Yes.
Mayor Sullivan.
Yes.
Councilmember Grabowski.
Yes.
Councilmember Ruska.
Yes.
Motion approved.
Thank you. Consideration of local revenue sharing board grant applications. The local revenue sharing board distributes 2% money from the Little River Casino. The deadline for the 2025 cycle, one application is Friday, March 14th, 2025, at 5:00 PM. City staff has prepared two grant applications for submission to local revenue sharing board. This agenda item will include two separate motions, one for each grant application. At this time, council could take action to authorize the submission of a grant application to the local revenue sharing board for the fire department in the amount of $7,375.50 for the thermal imaging camera and combustion gas detectors. Is there a motion?
I'll make a motion.
I will second that.
Any discussion?
Chief, how old are these cameras that we had before the imaging? Again?
So we have one newer camera. I'd say that's about five years old. And the other one that is on our other fire truck is over 15 years old.
Oh, okay. Thanks. Good to remember.
Thanks. Heather, would you, any more questions for Chief? Would you please take role?
Councilmember Raditz.
Yes.
Mayor Protem Smith.
Yes.
Councilmember Lasky.
Yes.
Mayor Sullivan.
Yes.
Councilmember Grabowski.
Yes.
Councilmember Ruska.
Yes.
Motion approved.
Thank you. At this time, council will take action to authorize the submission of a grant application to the local revenue sharing board for the police department in the amount of $27,677 for surveillance cameras. Is there a motion?
I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
Any discussion on this one?
Who was my second? I'm sorry.
Second.
Oh.
We have surveillance cameras out there now.
We have some, but they're outdated. And I'm sorry, Chief Glass isn't here tonight. He wasn't feeling well. But we talked about the issues we're having with graffiti and some other vandalism that's been going on. So this was something that we actually budgeted $15,000 for last year, and the thought was, we need to upgrade these to the point where they help us get some images of faces and things like that. So I'm very happy with the, I think, you see the plans of where these cameras would go, and I think this would help address some of those issues.
From the same company we had before?
It's a company that I believe between Mr. Bradford and Chief Glass, they felt comfortable with the product.
One of the problems that we've had with our cameras is that there are multiple different systems because they were put in at different times. These cameras have a lifespan of three to four years because the technology changes so quickly. And we could never get a company to service all of them. And the ones that we did get were a problem, couldn't come down and fix them. So the idea is to get one company, get these on a service plan where we'll pay a monthly fee, but if there's a problem, they come fix them. And they'll all be on the same platform, so they'll be able to kind of monitor them all together. So it'll be the first time we've ever really had that. Should be a nice upgrade if it's granted.
Oh, good.
I guess one thing I noticed, I'm having difficulty reconciling the proposals because they say they're good for 90 days, yet it states in several places, "This proposal is for budgetary purposes only. If you would like to move forward, a final number can be provided after a final walkthrough is conducted." I didn't understand that.
Yeah, I think that's just standard language. The vendor that he's recommending did a walkthrough. They've actually been down here.
So it is truly just a 90-day contract. It's not, the number's not changing?
The number's not, the number should not change unless there's a scope change.
Okay, right, understood. On the cameras, are the surveillance, do they provide surveillance? Or are we doing the surveillance? And how does that work? A little bit, how these?
Well, they're just fixed cameras, and they're at the strategic locations at each of the facilities. And each of those facilities will have a DVR, but those DVRs will be accessible over the internet. So it's kind of a hybrid system. We don't have to worry about the bandwidth to go to the cloud. If the internet goes down at those facilities, they're still saving them to a DVR, so there's an advantage there. But our officers should be able to access them remotely, or if there's an issue with that, they can go onsite.
So kind of access after an issue more than, I mean, they're not constantly monitored, correct? It's just like access after.
They are not constantly monitored. Absolutely not. We don't have the manpower for that.
Okay, good.
Thank you. Heather, would you please take role?
Councilmember Raditz.
Yes.
Mayor Protem Smith.
Yes.
Councilmember Lasky.
Yes.
Mayor Sullivan.
Yes.
Councilmember Grabowski.
Yes.
Councilmember Ruska.
Yes.
Motion approved.
Thank you. Consideration of applications to boards and commissions. The city clerk has taken action to advertise vacancies on the Board of Review, Compensation Commission, Historic District Commission, Neighborhood Restoration and Beautification Commission, and Planning Commission. Mayoral and manager appointments require a motion, second, and council voted to support. Nominations for council appointments do not require a second. After all nominations are made, council votes on the nominees until one nominee receives the majority support. The following applications have been received. Neighborhood Restoration and Beautification Commission, one vacancy term ending 4/30/26. The purpose, identify or research and recommend opportunities and resources to help prevent, remediate, and eliminate blight, and help beautify the City of Manistee. Council appointment, Andrew Stafford for 275 First Street. The Planning Commission, one vacancy term ending 10/31/25. The purpose, review master plans, zoning, site plans, development issues, mayoral appointment. We have Marty Spalding, 354 First Street, David Blair, 213 10th Street, Ken Scarpes, 225 Lake Shore Road. At this time, mayor and council could take action to appoint as noted. The first one will be the NRBC. Is there a nomination?
I'll go ahead and nominate Andrew Stafford, 275 First Street, for the vacancy term ending 4/30/26.
Is there a second?
No, we don't need a second.
I'm sorry?
We don't need a second on that. We just need to vote.
Okay. Would you please take role?
Councilmember Raditz.
Stafford.
Mayor Protem Smith.
Stafford.
Councilmember Lasky.
Stafford.
Mayor Sullivan.
Stafford.
Councilmember Grabowski.
Stafford.
Councilmember Ruska.
Stafford.
The nomination has been approved.
Thank you. For mayoral appointment, I would like to nominate Ken Scarpes to the Planning Commission, one term ending 10/31/25. Is there a motion?
I'm motion making.
I'll second that one.
Heather, would you please take role?
Councilmember Raditz.
Scarpes.
Mayor Protem Smith.
Scarpes.
Councilmember Lasky.
Scarpes.
Mayor Sullivan.
Scarpes.
Councilmember Grabowski.
Garpes.
Councilmember Ruska.
Scarpes.
Motion approved.
Thank you. Now we have a report from the Manistee Recreation Association, Mr. Eric Thummel.
Good evening. Good to see everyone tonight. Some new faces from last year. Most of them friendly. Do you have a?
Oh, I do. Here. Press the down arrow. The down. Yes.
Okay, so here with report this year from the Manistee Recreation Association. We've been around since 1942, serving across the county, not just the city, but residents from all over. Some of our programs, again, this year, just to refresh your memory, if you don't recall, we've got basketball season finishing up right now. Soccer season's about to begin. We have travel soccer with the Manistee Soccer Club, T-ball. One of the new things this year, Myths and Legends Camp, you'll see up there, that was in partnership with Backstage Hobbies and Games. They run its D&amp;D and live-action role-playing combined, where you've got kids running around the parks with foam swords, chasing each other, playing capture the flag and similar outdoor activities, in addition to playing some board games as well. So that's an exciting new event that we've added this year. Falling for Fitness, just pointing out one of them there in purple, that's Running Club. It's like Girls on the Run, but for boys and girls. And I want to point out, our Adult Kickball League has added teams this year, so that's more activities for the adults in the area. One of the new programs I'm proud of is the Teen Referee Clinics. We had a teen basketball referee clinic, and these were to train teenagers to help referee rec games. And some of them are even joining in with the MHSAA to join the legacy program, to be able to referee middle school games next year with an adult. So that's exciting, to get them involved in taking responsibility. We've got flag football, our ski programs ending this week, and track and field camp. Those are just some of the highlights of the programs that we run for kids, not just of this area, not just kids, adults as well. As the MRA, we rely on community involvement heavily. We are sponsored not just by local municipalities, but by local businesses. We partner with the Payne Aquatic Center. Swim lessons started this evening. We've been involved with local festivals, the Forest Festival, we are in the parade, Run the Pier, Festival of Races. We helped run one of their kids booths and had a lot of activity there as well. We've got a ski program with the Crystal Mountain Resort. We've got over 100 volunteers, parents and adults and teens that help officiate and coach kids and run our programs. We've had a lot of support from the City of Manistee's Parks Department, keeping all the fields looking great and in playable condition. The area school districts help us out greatly with practice times and event locations. Manistee Public Schools, Anakama Schools, Bear Lake Schools, Trinity Lutheran, all of those districts have provided locations for our kids to participate this past year. We, and we've held programs at the Armory Youth Project as well in conjunction with them. So participation from all around is what makes the MRA work. It's not just focused in one location. We had over 1,400 youth registrations last year in our events, not accounting the adult events, and that's of over 800 youth. Just over a third of those numbers tend to come from the City of Manistee. So that's obviously our largest population. But we had participation from 13 different townships. There's, that's more townships than in Manistee County, if you count that through. So that means we've got people from outside the county coming as well. One of the things we do each year is we award the Charles E. Shadle Award to recognize an individual in the business that's been supporting the MRA throughout the years. In this past year, Brandon Prince, one of your own city employees, for, not just for helping keep the fields in shape, but for all his volunteer work with the soccer programs. Okay, there we go. And I, a little bittersweet on this one, but Fableite Industries and Steve Payne, you know, they've been sponsoring us since they've been an organization. And now that unfortunately he's shutting down, he promises to continue to sponsor the MRA through their great openings division that's located out of Luddington. They can, promise to continue to support us. So we'd want to thank them for their support this past year. We have businesses in the community, not just in the City of Manistee, but you'll find businesses all across the county that are supporting the MRA and help us to put on our programs. And a lot of businesses in the northern half of the county as well, really want to take the time to support the kids. And we're very appreciative to have their support. In addition to businesses, we gather appropriations that's, we request that the local municipalities chip in to pay for the kids in the area that have participated from their location. And in the past year, we received support from the County of Manistee, the City of Manistee, you've been very generous. We appreciate it. And then different townships, Maple Grove Township, Bear Lake, Anakama, Manistee Township, Philer Township, and Grant Township, which isn't even in Manistee County. They've been a member for the past few years, supporting us. And I'm proud to say that already in 2025, Brown Township and Rilla Township said they would join in in supporting the MRA again this year. By their support, it helps provide the programs at a more affordable cost for their kids and for all the kids in the area. And part of that affordable cost is scholarships. We do give out scholarships to kids, to families that show a need for support for registration funds. And in the past year, we gave out 42 scholarships to youth to join sports teams or clubs, totaling over $1,500 in cost, and made that available to those families. So we're always looking ahead at the MRA of what we can do in the future, what's coming forward. And one thing we always have to do is upgrade our equipment. It's great, we've got new bats last year from a grant, new soccer goals, new basketballs, but kids use them, and they get worn down. And so we're always looking to upgrade our equipment. Baseball bats are pretty expensive, and a lot of the ones we have are pretty dinged up. So we're looking at getting a few more baseball bats this spring. That's one thing in particular. Other things we're looking ahead to is collaborating with local institutions on facility use. Just this past week, I was able to meet with the Parks Committee to discuss some potential changes that are, could happen with the local parks and facilities. And this past week, I also met with the school superintendent to discuss some of those things as well, some of the possibilities. So we're glad to have input on what we see could benefit the community and maybe come up with different or more efficient use of the land that's available and how it's being used right now. And we've got lots of opinions on that. We'd love to continue to be able to be a source of information to help you with that. And finally, we're always looking to explore new programming. Adult programming would be a huge plus. I've always got requests. We've been in talks with a few of the adult groups that meet, sports groups, about potentially joining the MRA and how that could help them out. Sports clinics and camps, we're always looking to put on more, and of course, collaborations with other groups. Big request we've got right now for activities is flag football. It was for first and second grade for years. This past fall, we added third and fourth grade, and numbers just grew, and now the fifth and sixth graders are feeling left out. So that's one thing to look for. But with all that, we're always looking for space to play, and there's only so many fields and parks available, so it's a balance. But we're so grateful for the support we receive from the city from years past and look forward to moving forward. So I just want to thank you for all the over 1,400 participants, youth and adults, over the past year for your support, and looking forward to a great 2025. Are there any questions for the council that you'd like for me?
How many refs did you get at that clinic?
We had 20 teenage basketball refs, 21 teenage basketball refs. And then I asked them all, how many of them are interested in reffing for weekend games? I think 14 of them have turned out and joined in. And I think they're doing a great job. We've got a regular ref that comes in and monitors how they're doing and stops and critiques them. And if he's not there, I'm doing that job as well. And the ref, or the coaches have been reporting back to me that they're doing a great job. I've been really excited. There, some years you have to beg for refs. Now I've got to turn them down and tell them, I can only give you so many games because there's other kids that need a chance as well. It's not going well. And so we're doing a soccer one at the end of this month, and hoping we'll get a good turnout for that as well.
Yeah, just a comment. I think you're being overly modest with some of the things that you're, that you're doing. I sit on the board as the city representative, and I could not be more impressed with the work you're doing and the MRA does. Silly me, my exposure to the MRA has been driving past them on Saturday mornings, thinking, oh, well look at all the kids in the field. From what you, what you're doing, and you probably should expand upon the ski trip where you are the bus driver. And then he drops the bus off and comes back to a meeting in Pleasanton Township, and then goes back up to get the kids, to bring them back. So keep up the great work. It's truly impressive, and thank you for what you're doing.
Thanks, I appreciate that.
Yes. Thank you, Eric.
Thank you very much.
Citizens' comment. This is an opportunity for citizens and attendants to comment on municipal services, activities, or areas of city involvement. Limited to five minutes. Letters submitted to council will not be publicly read.
Hello again, council. In regard to the abhorrent, repugnant, and malicious, and it is malicious, mistreatment of our brown, black, and non-white immigrant and refugee neighbors, I'm of a mind that the immigration enforcement should be pursuing dangerous criminals, as it was repeatedly stated over and over again that that was their intention. But who are they arresting? Hard-working members of our communities at their work sites, at schools, at places of worship, at taco stands. These immigrants and refugees, whose only crime is seeking a butter life for their children and themselves, some of them with children in tow through seven countries on foot to reach the land of opportunity, are now being hunted by men with guns. These fellow human beings are willing to risk their lives in order to escape poverty, crime, corrupt governments, and subjugation. They're desperate or fleeing danger. According to Google, from January 20th to February 13th, that's 23 or 24 days, immigration enforcement had killed at least 106 people. That's over four a day. Only four a day? Eh, right? And injured 301. It's been 21 days since then. Extrapolate it out, and you can expect 44 more deaths. And that leaves us today with over 150 immigrant and refugee dead by American hands. Is this what people voted for? Are we now the bad guys? The world is watching us. According to Julia Turkowski and others in The New York Times, immigrants are now being housed in makeshift camps near the Panamanian jungle. The immigrants shipped from the US said that once they reached Panama, they were stripped of their passports and most of their phones, and then locked in a hotel, barred from seeing lawyers, and told they would soon be sent to a makeshift camp near the Panamanian jungle. They were filmed holding up signs to the hotel window reading, "Please help us." Another woman held a sign reading Afghan and indicated through pantomime an airplane and her head falling off. The message seemed to be clear. The flight home means death. These appeared to be Afghani families, refugees. These people are desperate and fleeing danger. Are we going to be silent accomplices to this? And if you're interested, if you want to get the whole story here, I highly recommend MSNBC's February 20th edition of Deadline White House with Nicole Wallace. That woman is at the top of her game. They're being sent to Guantanamo, and not a one of them was a 9/11 terrorist. Again, away from legal representation. Remember the stories about the abhorrent treatment received at Guantanamo? There's no transparency, and they're away from oversight. According to the Associated Press, an administration official said that among other, others, Guantanamo will be used to house people who are hard to deport. Some countries will not take back our deportees to their countries. So what do we do? So what do we do? Lock them up for life in another country? According to the nonprofit International Refugee Assistance Project, a report last year stated that people are held in, quote, "prison-like" conditions at Guantanamo. It said they were trapped in a punitive system, a system to punish. These people are not being screened for protection. They came here seeking security and safety and opportunity, and they're simply being spirited away to some makeshift jungle camp. These people are desperate or fleeing danger. In the words of Illinois Governor J.D. Pritzker, tyranny requires your fear and your compliance and your silence. Democracy requires your courage. I ask you to be fearless, noncompliant, and loud. If you want to do something really meaningful while in office, something that truly affects a lot of people in a positive way, courage can be contagious, be spreaders. Politics be damned. It only takes for us to stand up and say out loud for others to hear, something's wrong, something's broken, something needs to be fixed. Thank you. My name is Mike Herbert, and I live in Manistee.
Anybody else? Mr. Campbell.
Nothing at this time, thank you.
Ms. Resga.
Just, Bill, if I could have an update on the Renaissance land sale?
Yeah, I did talk to Mr. Canooty, I think they're, I think it's at the end of March is when the deadline is, so I think you're still looking for that, to meet that date.
And then, you know, good for Benzy County, they got a wellness and aquatic center with the purchase of Crystal Lake Elementary School, so I think that was a positive, good thing happening with another elementary school in the county. That's it.
Mr. Grabowski.
That's it.
Ms. Lasky.
Are we getting some information from that Granicus report on the numbers and stuff? Are we ready to hear that?
Yeah, so the Planning Commission's been working through that, the short-term rental ordinance, so we'll, I think the plan is to kind of talk through that when it comes to council.
We are getting numbers, and it is running the programs?
We are getting numbers. Yes, it does work.
Okay.
The only thing, excuse me, last month or actually this issue of Lakeland Boating, Manistee got a shout-out about the Riverwalk project, so it was kind of cool to be thumbing through it and see the fruits of our labor there, so good job on that again, good to see.
Ms. Raditz.
Just want to comment, the buzz around town about all the projected improvements